Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everyone. We're really glad you're here today.
We also have the amazing Julie from our team here. What's up Julie?
Hello.
We're so excited to have you here today and certainly excited to see all of you again. We were not live last week because we were in Salt Lake City for Aroma Sharing and Convention. So I'm so glad we got to see so many of you there in person. That was amazing. Today, we're going to get caught up on a couple of things. We're going to share with you some of the promos that we have extended. So if you didn't take advantage of those during Aroma Sharing and Convention, there's still an opportunity to do so. We'll talk about that here on the call. But most importantly, I want to address something. So many of you came to our table at Aroma Sharing and said the same thing. You know, I have you guys and I've had you for a while, I think. Or for insert amount of time here. And I just don't think I'm getting the most out of it. Does that feel like you? Have you ever said that before? You know, I've got this thing and I see the value, but I just don't think I'm getting what I'm supposed to get out of it. I'm not getting the most out of it. So today, we're going to be talking about that and how we can fix that. And of course, most importantly, we're going to be talking about how you can get the most out of your Get Oiling subscription, no matter what plan level you're at. So one of the emails that I sent out, I don't know if you guys got it earlier this morning. If you're new to subscribing to our weekly work session list, you would have received an email this morning where I was talking about the one thing that your business needs, the one thing your business needs that most of us don't have when we get started, especially when we're just thinking about sharing, maybe we're not quite putting our business hat on. And it's a really important tool that you need. And it's actually something that costs less than most streaming platforms. And it's also, if you're paying for Zoom, you get it for free and it's cheaper than paying for Zoom. What is it? It's Get Oiling. And for for those of you who get started with us at a seed or starter plan, it's $7 a month or $14 a month, depending on the size of your contacts, the volume of your contacts. If you're just getting started, there is a $7 a month plan that gets you Zoom included. And Zoom on its own is more expensive than that. And we never kick you off of it. It's like 24 hours. I think you could be on a Zoom before you get knocked off. So so you have access to that. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about what it looks like to take advantage of Get Oiling plans at all levels. We are not going to be getting into super high tech stuff. That is something you can create very sophisticated systems and websites with us. That's not what everyone needs when they're getting started. The majority of the time, we just need a couple of tools to get our bearings and start getting moving forward in our business. And then the other needs start to reveal themselves. And what you'll discover is that Get Oiling is there. We've already thought of it. Somebody's already asked for it that paved the road ahead of you and we've got you covered. So we're going to get into some slides here in just a bit. Go ahead, please head over to the chat, introduce yourself. Let us know where in the world you are. Let us know if you are at convention or Aroma Sharing. We'd certainly love to hear from you. We're so excited that you're here with us today. We're going to pop out a video and get into these slides. We are going to do a little bit of demonstrating here today as well. And we do have one person that did sign up for a live website review. So stay tuned for that as well. So let's go ahead and get into this. So today, we are talking about how to get the most of Get Oiling from any plan level. All right. So what we're going to talk about today are first, of course, as promised, how we're going to get the most out of any plan level that you may have with Get Oiling. We're going to talk about our convention specials, which have been extended. And then we will, as always, get into live help and Q and A. So if you have questions or you need help, please go ahead and add those questions to the Q and A right now. This is a live work session that we host every week at noon Eastern time. And it's designed to be a session where we get to work. We get to work together. So if you have something that you are working on, that you need help with, this call is for you. So go ahead and add to the Q and A. We have literally the guy with the magic wand that created this whole platform, as well as Julie, who knows how to do everything on it right here to answer those questions. And if we need to look at anything in video together, we certainly can. And of course, if you want to join one of these calls, if you're watching this as a replay, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be notified of our upcoming trainings and be the first to get access to any exclusive resources that we might share, as well as, of course, the replays. And if you would like one-on-one help on a live call, as someone has registered for here today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview. And from there, you can sign up for dedicated space on an upcoming live call, or you'll join at noon Eastern time on a Thursday, just like we're here today. And at the latter half of the call, we can actually work through whatever you want to work on together, whether you are building a custom website, or you're just getting started with Get Oiling and you just really feel like you need a little bit of handholding to move out of the gates. We're here for you. All right. So if you want a hand getting more cool stuff done on your site, maybe you want some private one-on-one training, you want stuff done for you, maybe you have a website design you have in mind. You want to build out your member area, transfer from another platform, whatever that might look like for you. Go to getoiling.com/conceiers. You'll learn more about our amazing qualified team and how they can help you with your projects and get you growing. Now, question. Tell me in the chat, do you feel like you're getting the most out of your Get Oiling membership? Be honest. Yes, no? What do you think? Do you feel like you are getting the most out of what you are investing in? And what does that mean to you? What is getting the most out of this mean to you? Is it something that's based on your business and what it's telling you it needs right now? Or is it maybe based on comparison, the thief of joy? Can we be honest with ourselves about what that looks like? There's so much that we can do, right? But what do we, what do we really need, right? So let's just give some perspective here. And I'm just going to dump all this out front. This is all the stuff that we have, you guys. You have a contact manager. You've got a built-in compliant Young Living Sharing website. You can also create a fully customized website that's as gorgeous and functional as you would find anywhere else on the internet. You can have online and offline events, your own private community. You can move your groups off of Facebook or sell courses or programs. You've got email and texting from the same dashboard. You've got Zoom included. You don't have to pay for it extra. You can gather and generate leads and automatically follow up with them through our platform. You can upload videos and host them with us. We have tools for you as a team leader. There's an app your people can keep in their pocket. There's an AI writer and class creation tools. You can, of course, have an online store with us as well as if you want. And of course, this all comes with personalized support and live training every week and courses galore too. There's so much here. And look, before Get Oiling, you would need to buy and also learn how to use seven different softwares. If you wanted to get all this done, probably a different software for each one of those functions. And that's provided. Those are things that are even needed for your business, right? Think about this for a second. If you were to take Get Oiling and break it apart into all of its constituent features, and those were different services you would have to pay for, you probably wouldn't, you probably be slimming down and saying, okay, I need a contact manager. I need a way to email and text people and I'll go get a member area when I need one, right? That's what this would have to look like. And the price tag for doing something like that can soar up. And I can tell you from experience into the thousands of dollars per month before you're factoring in the cost of yourself or someone else that you're hiring to manage all of this for you. So we've put all of these things together in one place to make growing for you faster and easier. And that doesn't mean that you have to max out everything that Get Oiling has for you. It's just here for you when you're ready. Or if it's a particular function that your business doesn't need, that's okay. You're not paying extra because you have it, right? So you could price just a couple of the things that Get Oiling provides and still see massive, and I mean hundreds of dollars of savings each month. And that's at the majority of our plan levels. All right. So let's not be so hard on ourselves for what we're not doing and celebrate the progress that we are making, right? Head over into the chat and tell us, share with the community, one thing that you have done with Get Oiling in the last few weeks. What's something that you've done recently? Did you reach out to a contact? Did you meet someone when you were out in the world and you put their information in and reminded yourself to follow up, right? Sean created a class. That's fantastic. Some of you guys who are saying, I'm not using it to its full extent, have full member areas to educate your customers and custom websites. Stop beating yourself up, you guys. Like, everything worth knowing takes time to figure out. And you and your business is worth the investment that you are making in your growth. Look at all of this in the chat. You guys are crushing this. This is amazing. You're texting your team, getting them excited about convention. You've created a class, set up a vault. You've been texting. I love it. Creating an event for an open house, sending emails to your people. Exactly. Celebrate this. You're doing the work, right? Get Oiling is a tool. So think about like having like an open pass to just go into Home Depot and get what you need when you're working on a project, right? Just when you need it. I don't need a chainsaw right now, but I might need it at step seven. And you could just go in and walk out and not pay extra for it. That's what you've got here. Until now, if you just need a hammer and a nail, you've got it. Celebrate it. You're building something. You're doing something. And when you need to go and get something that does a little more heavy lifting, it's already there for you. It's on the shelf. You've got a fully stocked garage now. All right. Workshop, what have you. All right. So let's talk about how we can make the most of Get Oiling. All right. So the first thing that we want to make sure that we're doing is adding our virtual office contacts to our Get Oiling account. How many of us have done that? Let us know. Have you downloaded your VO file? And added those contacts to your Get Oiling system? I need you to understand that this is the most important thing for you as a brand partner that you can do. Your business is people, it's relationships. And your contact manager is your hub of managing the relationships that you have and the relationships that you will have and that will grow into those customers, new customers that you will have. And of course, your brand partners on from there. This is the most important thing you can do. If you have done this, congratulate yourself. You are getting so much out of this if you're using it, right? So from there, we're going to use Get Oiling to email and text our people who are our customers. How many of you guys have sent a personal email or text to someone that is your Young Living customer within the last week? I'm sure you have, right? When you're talking to someone, yep, just this morning. Look at that. Look at all these yeses. You guys, you're doing so great. So yeah, that's what we're going to do. We're going to add our VO contacts to Get Oiling and then we're going to reach out to our people, okay? Use Get Oiling to reach out individually. You can, of course, reach out to many at once, although I highly, highly recommend that you stay on top of the individual communications because people really do like to be treated as people and not numbers. And this is a relationship business, not a broadcasting business, right? Do you make sure when you're doing that, you're reaching out one-on-one, that you're adding notes and to-dos for yourself? And I will go in and show you what it looks like to manage your individual contacts here in just a few minutes. Another thing you want to make sure you're doing is adding your new contacts to Get Oiling. So if you are meeting someone out in the world, add them to your Get Oiling. Or maybe it's somebody that you already know, but you realized when you were DMing them on social media that they actually might be somebody who would benefit from a particular Young Living product. And so you want to go ahead and add them to your Get Oiling contact manager. Give yourself a to-do to maybe follow up in a couple of days about the conversation that you had with them so that you aren't just, you know, jumping in and being opportunistic in a conversation with your friend, right? So again, same as what you would do with your contacts. You can use Get Oiling to email and text people that you already know and add notes and to-dos. But importantly, maybe, maybe you're just friends with somebody on Facebook or Instagram and you are just having a conversation with them, but you don't have their phone number or their email yet. With Get Oiling, you don't have to have that information to have their contact info there and for you to be able to treat them just like you would for anyone else who is a contact of yours, who might be a potential future Young Living customer. So we're also going to use the Digital Upland Coach. How many of us are using the Digital Upland Coach? This is a game changer. If you are really, you've started sharing and you realize that you really want to do something with Young Living as a brand partner, using the Digital Upland Coach will give you the perspective that you need to make sure that you're doing enough of the right work to reach your goals, right? I highly recommend it when you set it up, that you go on the lower end of hourly availability because most of us are conditioned to believe that there are things that we do for our business that we probably shouldn't do in the volume that we do, right? So we're used to spending a lot of busy time, right? So use the Digital Upland Coach that will help to make you a better brand partner. And then finally, use the built-in themes. When you get started with Get Oiling, you have a gorgeous range depending on the market that you're in. You have a range of built-in websites that are completely built. And when you add your Get Oiling, your Young Living member number, rather, to your Get Oiling account when you sign up, these things are fully ready for you to share. And when someone clicks a link that goes to a product, they add it to their cart or to their new monthly order, they're going to be under you as your customer when they do so. So we have these compliance sharing sites that you should absolutely be using. No need to reinvent the wheel. And of course, you should be using those as Young Living sharing tools. So our first step is to import our VO contacts, okay? So we do have a training on this. You can find it on our YouTube channel. It's called How to Import and Update Your YLV reports for Easy Communication. And we also, if you just type in the word import in our help center, you'll see that there is a fantastic article that goes through the steps with screenshots here as well. All right. Our next step is to manage our VO contacts as well as adding new contacts. Now, before I get too far ahead, I want to actually swap my share out and go show you guys how we actually do this in Get Oiling. So let's go into Jane's dashboard here. I'm going to switch my share and show you guys this. So once you have your contacts uploaded to your Get Oiling system, you can go over to your contacts and you can see everybody. Oh, this is the tree viewer, by the way. So you can see everybody that is your contact. You can also filter and see who is what. So if I go to filters and I want to see if somebody is, if my contact type is a product customer, I'm going to filter. And these are my Young Living customers. How about that? That's pretty cool, right? You can also filter for people who are on loyalty rewards. And it's going to be based on whatever your most recent VO upload to the system is. So I'm going to check this box for has subscription and filter. And look at that. Here are all of our people who are on loyalty rewards, right? Pretty, pretty cool. So what we can do is, is we'll just go in here. And let's just say I want to reach out to people who are maybe not on loyalty rewards. So somebody is a customer. They are not on subscription and we filter. Here is Mama Jones here and I want to, maybe because this is my customer, I want to reach out to her. Maybe I'm going to add some basic notes here, but I want to make sure that I'm reaching out on a regular basis. So in the background information, we could say where we met. We could put a link to the Facebook profile, for instance, if we didn't have contact information, if this was a lead. You know, you could put information like, do they have kits? Does she have pets? You know, some of her interests, things like that, that might be relevant to you. Another place you might want to put information like that, if it's important to you and how you want to run your business, is you can actually edit this contact and you can go over and actually add new tags. So maybe if we want to say pet owner, I want to add a tag there. And so every time I find out that someone I'm connected to is a pet owner, I make content and share content that is specifically helpful to people with pets. And of course, Young Living has great products for people who have pets. Now I can actually search for anybody who is in my contacts, who is a pet owner. So we'll go look for this filter, pet owner. And then we'll be able to go and find everybody that we have given that tag to. Now, if I want to send an email or a text to Mama Jones, I have her email address and her number right here. I can just click send an email and then I can write something and send it. I can also send a text. So I just pop that in there and I can send that off to her directly. And of course, anything that I do here is going to show up in past actions. So that email that I send, that text that I send, it's going to show up over here. It'll have a date next to it and it'll show whether or not that person opened the email or clicked a link in the email. So you can actually really track things that matter. You can see if she's going to the website, if she's visiting a member area, et cetera. That kind of information is going to show up here as well. So there's a lot of really cool stuff that you can do here, can see here, but don't worry about what you can do later. Worry about what you need to do now. You can add to-dos to your contacts here. So maybe I want to follow up. I want to make sure that I reach out to her and, excuse me. Maybe I actually want to put her on a follow-up plan, monthly care calls for one year. I'm going to add that follow-up plan. And now I'm going to get a to-do for my monthly care call with her, right? So I'm actually behind here, obviously. So here's my to-do for my monthly care call. Maybe I'm going to go ahead and just make that call. And I'm going to go over here and say, call, had call on July 20th. Trying sulfur zyme. Interested in pet products. Okay, so I'm going to add that past action. I just had that call with her and I'm going to check off my to-do for my care call. So you can actually see that these things are being checked off, which is pretty cool, right? So this is how we manage our work because our work is in relationships. Now let's go over here and talk about how to create a contact. So if we go ahead, I'm going to resub all my filters here. I want to, maybe I just met somebody. So I'm going to go create a contact and maybe I just know them on social media. So I'm going to, I'm going to put a name in here. And since I don't have an email or a phone number yet, that's totally fine. I'm going to put a tag in here. And this is a Facebook lead. You could put whatever you want here that makes sense to you. And again, any information here that's appropriate, you can put here. And the background information, met in mom's group on the 20th. And I'm going to go create the contact. So now she's here. I don't have contact information, so I can't email or text her. But maybe eventually, when it makes sense for me to ask for her email address, I could go in here, hit edit and then put her email address in or her phone number and I can get this thing updated. And again, we can add our past actions. Did we have a call? Were we messaging on Facebook Messenger just to make sure that we're really clear on what that action was? And then, of course, what's my to-do? What do I need to do next? What do I want to make sure that I do that I need to be reminded for? Because all of the to-dos that you give yourself with their dates are going to show up in your email that Get Oiling sends you on a daily basis. Those reminders are something that you're going to see on a daily basis. If you're not seeing them, go over to your contact settings and hit general here. And you can make sure that you check this box right here. Send me a daily email of activities and to-dos. And that's going to remind you who you need to follow up with and what you wanted to remind yourself to do. Now, the, the fourth thing that we want to do, and that's coming back over here to our slides, just to catch up to where we are. So we added our contact and now we want to use the Digital Upland Coach and add our story and photo. And then finally, we're going to use our built-in theme as a sharing tool. I want to just kind of show you those there so we can really get into the visuals here. So the Digital Upland Coach, you can actually see from anywhere when you are signed in to your dashboard. So right here, I've got this cute little alligator that says, I can't eat an elephant in one bite. Keep chomping. So we can click on it and actually see that I've made some progress. I have to-dos that when I check them off, I actually will get more progress. You'll see my progress move. If those to-dos actually have a coaching activity related to it. So maybe in this particular case, this is maybe following up with somebody. And so when I check that off, it's going to, it's going to move that, the needle up here and see our progress. So you can actually see what our progress looks like. Obviously, this is fairly newly active. You can see the activities that we have accomplished this week. And then, of course, if you want to modify your Digital Upland Coach and how it works, we can go over here and click a little icon. And what I highly recommend again, unless you have done a lot of training and mindset work on what it means to be productive as a business owner in network marketing, err on the lower end of recommended hours. I would just say, start off here so that you have a win, right? Get yourself a win and feeling good about this. So start on the lower end. And then, of course, you want to specify whether or not you have at least one brand partner that's linking arms with you and actively growing Young Living. Or if you don't, because the recommendations are slightly different. So you save that setting. And then you can choose your coach. Everyone is fairly gentle. Some are just slightly more direct. It's just slightly different personalities for each of these. So pick the one that works best for you. They're all cute and fun. So I'm going to go back over here to Coach Uni, Unicorn, very sassy. Is one of the most popular ones in our system. So, so that's our coach. And then you also have, and this is a really cool thing, you can share your coaching progress with another person who is using Get Oiling as well with a Digital Upland Coach. And you can share with your team, your team can share with you. And so you can actually track team progress in this same area if you're using the Digital Upland Coach. So like I said, make sure that you're using this because it is going to be automatically suggesting different activities for you in different quantities. So in this particular case, we want to call or text, invite someone to check out Young Living, right? We want to do that five times a week. And if we did, we're going to click, I did it. And we're going to name the contact. So I'm going to put the contact in here. There we go. And I am going to hit finish. So I invited Ashley. You can see my progress moved ahead, right? So this is something that I really recommend that you check out. If you're ever wondering what you could be doing to grow your Young Living business, if you're using the Digital Upland Coach, you're always going to see activities that are meaningful for you to follow along with and accomplish. And you'll notice that these activities are weighted. So the value that that particular activity holds for your business is going to have a higher point value, right? Whereas it's going to be a lower point value for, you know, for things that don't quite move the needle as much. All right. So that is our Digital Upland Coach. Now, one of the things that you have when you get started with us, like I mentioned, is any number of different built-in themes for your website. Now, that's going to look really nice just out of the gates, but it's going to look even better if you head over here to my story and photo. And just like you have a picture of yourself on your social media profiles, add a picture here. Add a little thing here. And then share a little bit about yourself. And then this is going to show up on the built-in themes in your Get Oiling site. And so when people go to your Get Oiling website, they're going to see all of the great stuff that's on the page. And then they're going to see you. It's going to be your website, right? It looks like you. It has your picture. It has your story. But then it also has all of those great tools that point off to Young Living products. And then the final thing that you can do is go up here to share my site. And then you can grab your website link and then you can go out into the world and share it. Now Jane's account here does have a custom website, but I'm going to go over here to Leg Builder Links, which is something you do have access to at all plan levels. Let me go over here to this Healthy Living website here. And you could see an example of what this would look like, right? So here's Jane's website. We've got Live a Life of Wellness. It's this great little carousel at the top. Here is Jane's picture, her story. Yours would show up here as well. There are videos here that go straight to Young Living content. They learn about seed to seal. And of course, in this particular instance, we're learning about these different supplements, wellness products. And of course, if somebody clicks for this pain relief clean cream, for instance, and they come over here, they're going to be brought straight to the Young Living product. And when they add that to cart or to their loyalty order, then that is going to be a sale that is attributed to you, that's credited to you and your account. All right. So that's the final step is to share this, use this as a sharing tool because there's so much that's already made for you that is built in to your Get Oiling system, right? So make sure that you're using those. They're so very helpful for sharing and just do that one step. If you've got a social media profile, you can do that, my story and photo. do that, my story and photo update. And of course, create a really nice page that is custom to you without needing to know how to do anything very technical. So if you want to get more out of your website, if you want to get more out of your system, you might want to create a custom website, right? And that's, I know a lot of us who are here, that is a focus that you have. That's something that you are actively working on or that you have done. Now, if you haven't done this yet and it's something that you're interested in, we've got you covered. There are five basic pages that you want to have to create a custom website. And those are your homepage, your about me page, a why I chose Young Living page that points off to all those great built in themes, a confirmation page that you send someone to after they opt in to get something free from you, a four oh four page, which is if a link is broken or something doesn't work, then it sends them to the correct place. And then finally, it's not technically a page, but we do use the pages feature to create it as a custom footer for your website. So you have your own uh, branding uh, at the bottom of your website pages. And you can get access to all of these templates. It's a five hundred dollar value right now from inside your Get Oiling account. So if you are a Get Oiling member, this is something that you get access to for free. You can go to my account settings and check out the Brand My Business workshop. Now, if you want this done for you, if you want a professional to do this for you, we have you covered as well. Uh, we have extended our convention specials and that includes the brand launch essentials. This is open to anyone who is a Get Oiling member and it is such a huge value. So this is a three call series where you will meet with Jessica and you will establish your visual brands, your brand guideline and your Get Oiling brand presets. That's basically just making sure that whenever your font shows up, it shows up the same in all the different places. If we want the links to be a certain color, they're going to be that everywhere. So you don't have to worry about it. You can determine the message, the verbiage, the words that you will share with visitors on each of those five important pages. And then with Jessica, she will be uh, on a call with you modifying those essential website templates to make them your own, make it gorgeous, make it look like you. This is normally a thousand dollar package and this is a special that runs through the end of this week. It's only four hundred and fifty dollars. So uh, there is a um, a link that we will be sharing with you in the chat to all of our room sharing convention specials. And you'll see up at the very top of it, there's a link to get access to brand launch essentials. So definitely, definitely make sure that you're taking a look at this. Check this out, all right? And if you don't have Get Oiling yet, this is the best time to get started with us. Because it's convention, because of all of the excitement and the focus that comes this time of year. Uh, we've extended this special. Of course, I think a lot of us were really caught up in all the details of convention, whether you were there in person or virtually. Uh, so these will run through Sunday evening this week if you're watching this live. Uh, so if you want to win a full bottle of rose oil, every year we do this, we do a giveaway of rose oil and there are multiple ways to win. Um, obviously, you're here live. Uh, if you watch the replay, you'll, there will be a link below for you to click. When you get started with us at any plan level, you will get entered to win. That goes up ten times when you go annual, right? So if you're monthly, it's one entry, it's ten entries if you pick an annual plan. So this is something you will get access to in that way. Uh, you can also um, refer if you're an existing Get Oiling user, you can use your referral link. And of course, uh, we'll get you that credit with those entries and we will be announcing the winner later this month. We also have ways for you to set yourself up for success with systems. So we have a course that shows you how to move your groups off of Facebook. It includes templates and worksheets, everything that you need to get this done in an organized fashion so that you can have your own communities to educate your customers, communicate with them off of Facebook. We also have, because sending emails is a critical thing that we know how to do. Uh, but do we know how to do it for our business? There are particular things that you want to make sure that you're doing and not doing if you are sharing information via email and we go over this in detail. So if you want to be more professional with how you send your emails, this is a course that you'll get access to when you get started with us. We'll get more done and get the word out. You get access to your own business phone number and free two way texting. That could be for three months or an entire year, depending on if you're monthly or annual. You also get bonus marketing credits. This is the currency on the Get Oiling platform that allows you to do more, to send more information by email or via text. You also have a bonus of unlimited vaults and classes. You can reach and teach your heart out by creating online classes, memberships, programs and private areas on your website. And you can have as many of those as you want for three months if you get started with us monthly or for a whole year if you go annual. Also thinking about putting yourself out there in the best way possible. We have the personal branding intensive. If you guys have done it before, let everybody know that you love it in the chat. Uh, this is something that we do um, twice a year. And this is a live coaching intensive where you'll learn how to operate as a brand. So it's not just about the colors. It's not just about the fonts. It's about how you show up and the steps that you take. So if you want to grow a big personal brand business to attract great customers and clients, this is not something you want to miss. This is the only coaching intensive that I personally offer. And it's a way to work together in a small group setting. If you are an existing Get Oil and customer at a monthly level, you can get access to this if you upgrade this week to an annual plan. Now, we also have the Brand My Business Workshop, which I mentioned previously. That's got those five must have page templates, the easy to follow course. And of course, you can bring any of your questions here to our live calls on Thursdays. And if you want to have a professional create your website for you, of course, our brand launch essentials package is here for you as a Good Oil and member to take advantage of here for through the end of this week. And then finally, the Marketing Mastery Workshop. If you are someone who is really wanting to hone in and focus on launching a brand business with multiple offerings where Young Living is a part of what you do and you want to show up in a big way. You've got everything that you need, a complete blueprint that actually references all of our courses that we've released right here inside of one program. You get access to that as well. Uh, we're also giving away free custom website domains. You get access to when you get started with us at an annual plan. Uh, again, this is through the end of this week, your own name dot com or whatever you want your business name website to be. And then finally, if you get started with us at pro or diamond annual, you actually get a one on one tech and marketing consult. If you have a large team, you're looking to move over uh, into Get Oil and wanting to figure out the best way to do that to benefit your team, you can get access to that here as well. So we will be announcing the Rose Oil winner live next week. So let's make sure that uh, we are signed up and ready to go and you might be the winner. All right, so we're going to get into discussion, live help and Q and A. And Myrna had a really great question about how we can find our Get Oil and affiliate link. So let's go and get into that and show you how. Um, for those of you who are members of our valued community, all you got to do is go right over here to share my site. And then go right down here to my referral link. When you click this, it's going to give the person who signs up. Uh, you're basically going to share a free month, right? So they're going to get half off uh, their second month. They're a dollar for their first month if they pick one, our basic or higher plans. And then, of course, uh, you get to share uh, in that free month. So they get half off their second month and then you get a half month credit as well. Okay, so I have uh, scheduled today. Kim, are you here? Can you raise your hand for me? How can we help you?
Okay, so I was trying to make a form.
Okay.
That I can send out. Uh, we're actually going to send out postcards to my current customers and have a QA code on it that would link back to the form.
Okay.
And I want to ask them how I can help them, what things are they interested in? And I want them to be able to check the boxes that are there.
Okay.
It's made a form last night, but the boxes don't check. I think I shared that link uh, when I submitted.
For that, which, uh, do you know the name of it?
Um. Yes, how can I help, something like that?
Okay. Here we go.
So if you do, then it'll show the form that I made.
Okay.
Yeah, but they don't check.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, well, let's go take a look at the form.
No.
Okay, let's see. Okay, so actually, what you're going to want to do here is um, so we'll um, I'll give you an example. So I'm going to add a field here and we'll say uh, what you, would you like to learn more about? And then this would be a list. Uh, pick multiple. And then we'll edit the list and this is where you're going to add each of those things that you have here. So is that general wellness, family wellness, household wellness? So. And of course, you're going to want to um, let me see. Like, do you have any tags or anything like that here?
No, I didn't get that far.
Okay, got you, got you. So I think um, what may be happening here is, well, actually, Greg, do you have any thoughts on this? I'm not entirely sure because it looks like we have.
It does look like it's set up correctly, so I'm kind of looking at it on my computer here too. I might have to follow up after the call to see if there's something, you know, else that's on the form or on the page itself, you know, any, anything under estimation email or anything else that might be pasted in the code that's causing this. Because that definitely is interesting. It's like you hover over it and they all the titles change color. So
Yeah.
There's something odd going on there. So I don't know if that was like a copy paste thing or if there's something else that's happening.
It is pasted. Something is pasted.
That, that should be fun. Oh, okay. Uh, somehow I've got a oh, there's a link. Look at that right next to, so you can just actually switch back out of the code, out of code view. I think I see what's happening. I click on the word form there and then click remove link.
Uh huh.
I think the whole form is like a link and probably messing it up.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it doesn't hover.
That was it. Thank you. Awesome. All right. So yeah, that's um, that was it.
Okay, so I thought, I was trying to follow the step by step instructions um, in one of the help articles you guys have. And I thought it said I had to put that form in there and then link it to the lead. And I just didn't need to do that link. Is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah. When, when you want the form to show up on the page, you just want to make sure that you have form in brackets um, wherever you want it to show up. And then you have to just make sure in the settings that you show that the form shows on the page. If you're going to be using a pop up, then if you had a button that said click here, then you would want to link it to that hashtag lead and that would, that's what would create the pop up.
Okay, okay. And then um, so then if I go to each one of those categories and add a tag. Um. Yeah, then I can add tags there. So if people click on that particular immune support, they would be tagged with that.
Yeah, you will want to go in and and specify.
Okay.
Right, you would want to create, create a tag. Um, but what I would also consider here, because it is going to, so the past actions, you can actually see what they chose in their past actions. So if your intention here is really just to be able to see what, what one person is interested in so that you can follow up manually with that person, I would add these additional tags if you are trying to build a list of your customers who are looking for this or that or that. If you don't necessarily think it's useful for you to have a list of people with a specific interest on that, that are a part of your um, your contacts that you're managing, you don't necessarily have to go to that degree. Because if somebody were to fill this whole thing out, all you would have to do is go to their contact card, click past actions. It'll be uh, the name of the page uh, is, is what it'll show up as. And then you can just open it up and see everything that they answer, just if it's something that you want to reference.
Okay.
Do you plan to automatically send out tailored information based on what they selected? Or are you just wanting to manually follow up and make sure that you're, you know, connecting with them personally on the things they're interested in?
I think at this point, I plan to follow up manually.
Okay.
I don't know that it would be a bad idea to have them tagged with areas of interest so that if there's a class coming up, you know, on sleep support or whatever, I can filter through my people and see who said they were interested in that and specifically invite them.
There you go. Okay, yeah. So then that, that is, I think, a solid case then, if you're going to be hosting classes. So just take a couple of extra minutes and tag um, you know, tag them with uh, the interest. And, and what I would actually maybe consider is uh, like for sort of your, your nomenclature strategy here is that you say interest, sleep support.
Hmm.
Right? So, so that you are specifically denoting that these are people who expressed an interest, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Because you may use that differently um, at different points in the future.
Okay.
Awesome.
And then I think I have, I think I have it set up. So when they, when they leave that page, it automatically sends them an email that says, you know, thanks for reaching out. I'll get back with you in a few days or something.
Yeah, yeah. So that, yep, that looks exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, fantastic. And then, let me see. And then you're sending them to your homepage?
I, that's how I have it set up now, but then I thought it's probably going to be better to have some sort of like a confirmation page or something that they realize they successfully filled out the form.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. That's um, it will create some confusion if that's not something that you set up. So I would definitely recommend that you um, just create a custom one. If you go into the Brand My Business Workshop, uh, the one that we have in there, it takes like five minutes to edit. You just attach it to any, to any, um, anything that somebody opts into, just use that same one. It doesn't have to be custom to what you're offering.
Okay, great. And where do I find that?
Yeah, that's uh, the Brand My Business Workshop is something that you can find uh, when you're signed in. And you go down here to your account settings. And then you are going to go over here, Brand My Business Workshop, and then you sign up for it. That's going to give you access to this vault inside of the Get Oil and Member area. So when you go to get oiling dot com slash members and log in, you would then be able to uh, to access that course and all of its templates.
And then the template is in there.
That's right.
Perfect.
Yeah, thanks for coming out. Glad we could help.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, you guys. If you have any other questions, feel free to um, let us know. If you are, want to work on something together, we could certainly uh, work on something together as well. Um, Sean, did you want to talk through your event registration? Um, let me know. You can pop your hand up if you're available to chat and we can come out and, and maybe figure that out. Hey, how's it going?
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, how, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you. Um, so I created an event. And when you do that and you're going to email it out, it says, it, it pops up the text box to put in a message for the email, right? So I did all of that. And thank you, I used the I AI for that too, and that came out pretty well. But so I did that and but when I, when I sent it out and I'm, I'm on the list too. So when I sent it out, it only shows me that in the email, doesn't show the um, flyer, it doesn't show the link to register or anything. So I was getting responses back and then I went and, you know, but like I said, I'm on the email list too. So it's not showing any of that.
Okay. Um.
But I'm able to take the link, I put the link in social media and two people registered from that, but But it shows that people are opening the email, but they're not, they, I had a couple of people say to me, I don't see where to register.
Okay, so the. Want to look through, when, when did you send it? Because I want to, I want to find the.
If you go to.
Let me swatch my share here.
I think if you go to activity, it'll show you.
So this, I'm actually on your contact inside of get oiling. Yeah, when would you have sent this? Is it this in-person essential oil 101 class?
Yes.
Okay, not good.
And let me see if I can screen share what it, what it looks like on my end from when I sent it out. Oh, I don't know if I can do that. Can I show you what?
Here we go. I think, is, is this it?
Yes. So it only shows that when in, in the email, it doesn't show anything else.
It didn't include a link to the event to register. Got you. Okay. Okay. This is a hello Greg question. What, what, what might be happening here, Greg?
So that was a, it sent a campaign, correct? Is that what that email was that we were looking at there?
I think, did you, did you hit invite here? And then I think that's what you said, you went to invite, you went to mail.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I filled all of that out and then sent it. And but that's all they got. They didn't get anything else.
It didn't populate the link to the, to the event, right?
It normally puts the invite link in there.
Yeah, okay, that's something we might want to investigate. That's, that's maybe a bug. Because I think both with, with events and with, with Zoom meetings, it should be populating the link when you go to share.
And, and I remember doing, doing one before and the same thing happened. So, and I didn't even think to reach out to you guys. I just went to MailChimp and, and created it from there. But I want to utilize this, you know, to its full capacity. And it's getting easier for me to maneuver. But, you know, like I said, I did this class and, and I went through events and it's not showing up on the event page, on my event page. So I don't, I don't know what the glitch is.
It's not showing up on your event page.
If you go back to invite, I think you had gone to the action button, but there's like an invite button. Once you go back here that I try that, like click invite all, for example. Actually, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think that hit cancel here, otherwise it's going to invite everybody. But I think that's the one where it pops it up. So it might be an interesting idea to put that under the mail action there too, because I can see people doing that.
What do you, what do you mean? I didn't understand that.
So like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when you're inviting people, if you use the normal actions button, it doesn't look like it includes that event link automatically. If you push that invite all button at the top, or if you select, you know, actually like if you select one of them, for example, it actually pop up another button that will say invite selected. And so if you click that one, then it would pop up, it would invite them and then it would come up with another screen that would have the event invite link in it.
So that's the way I went. I invited specific people because it's an in-person class. So I only invited people that lived in this area and that, you know, it still came a different way.
Here we go. So this, this is, this is how that works.
Right, it didn't, it didn't have that. And I remember it doing that the last time from a different event that I did it and that was a while back. But the one in between is the one I said, never mind, I'll do it on MailChimp because I needed to get it out. But this time it did this again.
Got you. So.
I mean, it looks like it'll do that if you go to actions and mail instead. So maybe that's what the difference is here. Because that won't actually invite them, it just sends an email.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hold on.
It's, it's only, yeah, if you go to actions, you can do any of the actions you normally would. But if you want the, the invitation to apply, you have to go through what's up here at the top, right? So it's, it's in this little call out here. So you select the people. So I selected one of your contacts and I hit invite selected. And so that's going to add you to the attendee list, but it's not going to do anything else. So when we hit okay, it's going to pop up. And, and this is where you actually see, you know, please join the class, click to respond and learn more. And this is actually going to hyperlink and, and connect your event. So it would actually, this is going to show up as the name of the event. And then of course, you can modify this, you know, however you would want to with the copy inviting people in the email.
Okay. Is there a way to streamline that where we wouldn't have to do that step to make sure that that link is in there?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's good feedback. Having this thing here is confusing because it's what you normally use to sort. And, you know, am I emailing, am I texting, et cetera? So, so I, I think that that is, I think that is a, a sound thing to add to our list. But, but essentially all you're going to do is just come over to, to your contacts. Because part of what you're doing here is, you know, when, when you want to invite people to the event, you're going to go to your filters because you're not going to necessarily invite your entire list. You're going to, you're going to filter for this, filter for that, et cetera. Sorry, this is so cute. I just want to show any, any contact information. So you're going to filter for whoever you want to invite. But then you want to use the stuff that's up here because it's not only going to add them to the list of people that you have invited, but you're going to be able to basically track things that way. Because if you're going through, you know, do I want to tag them, do I want to this or that? You know, those are things that you can still do. But if you want them to be added to the event as someone who's invited, you just have to follow with some of the call out up here.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that was, that's a little confusing.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Especially when you're thinking that, you know, it's like one way to do it and you can get it done, click and go. So, okay.
It is slightly different. Yeah, I agree. Thank you for that and sorry about the confusion.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, let's see. When I do what you're describing, I create the event, copy the link to the event and then email it to who I want. Yeah, so, so Jackie, that's something that could work as well. If you, if you view the event and you copy the event link and then you want to put that into an email. But the one thing that, that doesn't really help you with is tracking. I invited these, this is the group of people that I invited and I want to see who said yes, no, maybe. So if you, if it matters to you that you're tracking the yes, no, maybe, then, then I would use the, that feature. And it's called out up at the top and I know maybe, maybe we use a different color that draws the eye up to it a little more for, because it is following instructions that are a little bit outside of what you normally would to send an email. But, but yeah, if, if it matters to you to know, I invited 40 people. You know, these are the people who said yes, these are the people who said maybe, et cetera. Then you are going to want to use that built-in, that built-in feature. So yeah, let's see, do we have any other questions, anything else that we want to cover before we get going? Do let me know. Make sure that you click the link below the video. If you're watching this on YouTube as a replay. And of course, if you haven't clicked the link in the webinar chat here, head over here, check out these specials that we have launching for aroma sharing and convention this year. These do expire Sunday evening. You can learn about all the stuff that we've got here. And then of course, head over to get oiling and get started if you haven't already. And then of course, if you're interested in brand launch essentials, then you can take advantage of that here as well. Just fill out the form, you'll get your invoice and then you'll be able to set up your time to sit down with Jessica. We had such a great time at Aroma Sharing this year. Julie was there with me as well as, as Jessica, who you guys met on a previous call, a bit newer to our team, but gosh, what a great fit. She's amazing. And, and it was amazing to sit down with the two of, of you ladies and meet all of these incredible members of our community. But Jessica, I think actually started filling up her calendar pretty quickly. So you guys, if you want to sit down with her, she's absolute whiz where it comes to getting things done and making them beautiful. Definitely take advantage of that. Or if you're looking for a project, maybe not just those five pages. Maybe you've already got those, but you want a refresh or something like that. You won't find someone more qualified to sit down with you and get those things done. So definitely take advantage of that. Jackie, I will paste that here in the chat one more time. And, and do remember again, use that referral link, you guys. It will get you entries to win a bottle of rose oil if you are already a member of our community. You get 10 entries when you refer somebody. So let people know. Awesome. So Amanda, if you could send that question over to our support team where it comes to billing, then, then, then we can probably handle that a lot better than we can on this call. So I certainly hope that you guys will be joining me for the personal branding intensive, become an icon. Excited to see you guys there. And of course, we'll be back here same time next week. There's a lot of exciting things in the pipeline. I hope that you are inspired to get back to sharing and really honing in and focusing on the relationship building that grows your business. Use your good one contact manager to do that. You're saving so much money when you do. And guys, for $7, you can get Zoom. Zoom costs more than that. So get your people over and we will see you on the next call. Take care, everybody.